Good evening. This is zoning water of appeals meeting for February meeting. And we have two items on the agenda tonight is to deal with miscellaneous business and continue hearing on Marion Way, of which we will be doing, not taking any information, but deliberating and talking with town council, Mr. Fletcher, who is with us. We'll see where we go. So for the first, first thing is the minutes of January 15th, 2015.
I read them when I came out.
Any questions?
No.
I'm pleased to say, Mr. Chairman, that in your absence, I presided over the shortest meeting in the board's history. I wanted to set a tone for efficiency.
Okay. I have a goal to work on. Are you trying to say I talk too much?
I didn't say anything. I'm just indicating it started at seven and ended at 7:30. You got 25 minutes.
Well, I hope we won't be too late tonight. Move on with you. Everybody read them. Okay, sir. Your motion to accept the minutes as presented?
Yeah, I make a motion, we accept the minutes as presented.
On second of?
January 15th.
Okay. Tom, second.
Tom, second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes have been approved. Okay, I don't know where to get started on this. You don't expect anybody else coming?
No.
Okay. I haven't seen a reason why we can't just jump right into it, even though it's on the schedule since 15.
Right. If you like, I'll give, I know since you were absent last meeting, I'll give you sort of a five-minute thumbnail about the grounds for this meeting and the request for town council, Steve Fletcher here.
Yeah, get us up to the right time.
As you know, we're at this point where the board would like to complete its review of this case. It has substantially secured all the material as best it could. And we have been working with our consultant attorney, Edith Metter, from Mass Housing, during the duration of the case. Her retirement preempts her completing the case with us. Bracket Lucas, town council firm representing the town of Raleigh, has been involved indirectly in some of the material that has been submitted before. And we thought at this point, in Edie's absence from the case going forward, that it would be helpful to have town council with us and work with us through the last phases of the decision process that the board's going to do. So after consultations with the board in the last meeting as a group, and further conversations with Don and I, I reached out to Steve Fletcher from Bracket Lucas and briefed him by phone about the scope of the case, about some of its history. I've shared with him a timeline which covers the four years that, plus that the case has been in front of the board.
Actually, five.
It's almost five now. And did not go into detail with all of the evidence that has been submitted in the case. There's been many, many rounds of information. There have been many, many rounds of continuances. But we're at a point now where the four acting members on this case, the remaining members, are here this evening. And we hope over the next couple of months to be able to complete our deliberations. And this would be the first step in the final phase of deliberations on the case. And Steve will be working with us, I think, as we complete the process and ultimately draft a decision, whatever direction we take. So that's where we are tonight. Steve, we asked Steve to be here so that we could discuss any number of variables concerning the type of decision in my right, and offer him any insight about the case that he would like to have. So that's why we're here.
Thank you for coming, Steve.
My pleasure.
And I hope you will be a great help to us.
I hope so, too.
As you know, we've been at this case for five years, coming April soon. And it's been a long haul. And we've had some discussion on many different aspects of it, some which we like and some of it we don't like. And we have found that, we feel that we got off to a bad start to begin with because they really weren't ready, they weren't really ready to commence with the project. They filed it the day before their letter of eligibility ran out. And it's been trying to, it's been difficult to get the information that we needed. And some of it did come through and some of it did not. And there are aspects of it that I think we feel that it could be a good project, but there are other aspects about it that tell us it's not a good project. And so we're in limbo as to which way we're going at this point. So I don't know where to begin. It's, I guess we could just start with a timeline and work our way through it.
Could I ask a question?
No.
Of course, I'm coming in on this call, so.
I know you are. I know you are.
So forgive me if I'm asking some elementary stuff here, but has the public hearing closed?
No.
Okay, so public hearing is still open?
Public hearing is still open.
As you know, there's a 40-day clock.
That's right.
It starts ticking.
Okay.
Go ahead. I just wanted, as you were starting to talk about deliberations, so I just wasn't clear as to whether the hearing is closed or not.
No, hearing is not closed.
Okay.
We are, we are under somewhat of an operational time constraint. I think, as you may recall from a conversation that Steve and I had, in that Nat will be retiring in June. So as a result.
Fifty-five years.
He will have, he will be unable to act on the case if we don't complete it by then, which would essentially mean that we need to have a decision drafted for signature. They could be recorded, certainly no later than our June meeting, which means operationally we're February, March, April, May. I think what we want to do is come up with a written draft for final review for our May meeting, have each of us have at least that 30-day window to do final deliberations. And then at the June meeting, this is a worst-case scenario. Best case would be that it's done sooner, but I don't know that it can happen sooner than possible. The decision would be signed for, signed at that point or recorded at that point, so that all of the original members are intact.
Right. I certainly make myself available for the board and do what we have to do.
All right.
Yeah, because it was originally five members and one of them's gone.
Yeah, Mr. Potts passed away.
I understand. I'm sorry to hear that.
One of the things that bothered me about this is, they've asked them for a slew of waivers. We haven't even discussed them. They have provided us with a list of waivers and the reasons for them. And the reasons are, it's non-economical. I have asked them repeatedly to give us, I wanted some figures as to how they, how they pertain to the finances. And they have not given us any of that information. So that's, that's one of the reasons that I am concerned about this. We've had many, many, many continuances. Some of them have been from our perspective, whereas we didn't have enough people or whatnot. And, but a lot of them have been because we'd asked for information and they weren't ready to give it to us yet. So let's continue it and continue it and continue it.
John, one question. Since the hearing is still open, I see you fidgeting. Have you got something for us?
PNS.
All right, Edith. Okay, good. We didn't want to get a current copy since the current copy we have is not valid. You know? Is it, John, is it essentially the same document?
The same one. Same one, updated.
Yeah, okay.
Here, Mr. DeCoulas. I'm pleased to finally meet you. I've seen your name in a bunch of surveys.
While Don looks at that, let me, let me pose a couple of questions. You had asked, Steve, if we had, in fact, at various times in our review of the case materials submitted to John, information in writing suggesting that we, that certain material was missing in particular, and that we want a specific information. Does Steve have a copy of it?
Oh, what?
The letters?
Oh, no.
One of the things we did, I believe you saw one copy, is that in April of 13 and May, two letters were sent. That's it, you have it.
They were emailed.
I'll make more copies, Don, if you want.
No, well, you've got one. You've got one. Is that the, did I send that one to you or did you get it?
You sent me a copy of an April 18th, 2013 letter.
Okay.
You indicated there was a May letter that you were looking for.
Yes, I have that letter for you, too. That's a follow-up to the April letter in which we, the April 18th letter, essentially outlined at that point in time, now almost two years ago, the board's desire to move more aggressively. And inasmuch as there would have been, if there was any kind of confusion about what the board was really looking for, we indicated that we would actually produce a very specific list for John of things that we were missing, so that there would not be any confusion. That was then on May 16th, this document which.
You made on a copy, no problem.
Which, which provides a, an itemized breakout of a number of items that we were still seeking before we could move further.
This is yours.
Part of that, part of that generated the information about the engineering firm. It was some Concom stormwater stuff. There were a lot of issues that required outside review that were out of all of our hands to actually deal with, as well as other modifications that occurred. Because here we are, here we are almost two years later, and we're really just at the point where that information, for the most part, hadn't been received by the board. Now we're in a position to act on it. Even though, as Don said, there are some elements of it that are, Don's thorough as the board would have liked, but at least, but they're applicable. I think one of the things that, one of the things that I want to inquire about and get some feedback from you as we go forward is the extent to which, the kind of conditions we can actually generate for, for the case. How specific they need to be. Does this have, does this have an expiration on it, John? Just out of curiosity. Does this have an expiration on it, too?
Yes.
Does it?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
It does. It's on your first page.
Okay.
What is the time? So I'm just going to give it to Lisa.
Oh, yeah, wait a second. I don't see the, I don't see an expiration date here. I see, I see the recording information. I see, there's failure.
Isn't that it, I think?
No. That's just, that's just a statement of the trust. This, it just says the agreement was made this day, January 15th. That's fine.
It's got December 2000, December 31st, 2015 date on it.
It does?
Yes. I saw it somewhere, I think, kind of place before December, no later than December 3rd.
Okay.
Such deeds to be delivered within seven days of expiration date of date of the final approval of plan. Those on water deals are rest of deeds, but no effect later, no later than December 31st, 2015, or as otherwise agreed upon.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Do you want to answer? Why don't we give a copy?
We did, we did ask for this, we did ask for this because the purchase and sale agreement had run out as of December 31st, 2014. So let the record show that we have received a new purchase and sale agreement dated 15th of January and expiration of December 31st, 2015.
Because I'm sure it's been a long, it's been a long time since we've actually revisited the scope and perhaps we've forgotten that.
I think, I think what we've got to do is we've got to start right from the beginning and go over it, see what's presented and, and. This project came, came to us in, in April of 2010. Our first public hearing was in May 20th, 2010. And we received several documents at that time. It was continued, a request for continuation to our August 19th meeting. No reason was given. On July, on August 19th, we continued the hearing. We had still not received the waiver list, applicant shows draft plans of address, to address town comments, the ZBA asked for waiver list and 20 copies of revised plans. The ZBA chooses engineer consultant, Camet Engineering, and we continued it to September On August 20th, we received a list of waivers. And we sent all those memos to all the departments for their comments. September 7th, 2010, the applicant submit response to comments. September 19th, continued public hearing. Give orders to project worry that it's just one phase of a much bigger market rate development. ZBA schedules and plans to post the site visit on September 23rd at 11:00 a.m. Board signed contract with Camet Engineering and continued the hearing until October 21st. October 8th, we had requested continuance for November 16th meeting. No reason given. October 21st, 2010, continued to November 16th. Mr. DeCoulas had sent us the sites and plans. And, and so, I give Mr. Health the platform of reference to the contract. November 11th, November 8th, 2010, request for continuation for December 16th meeting. No reason given. November 16th, continued to December 16th. Applicant, consenting request for continuance. November, December 9th, request for continuation to January 23rd. Time needed to adjust drainage calculations and new town pavement on Daniels Road. December 16th, 2010, continued to January 20th. January 19th, 2011, request for continuation to February 17th. Increase Daniels Road would create need to revise plans. Chairman asked DeCoulas to attend the January 20th meeting regardless. January 20th meeting, continued public hearing. Applicant explains change in plans for traffic concerns and says the plans will be revised, continued to February 17th. They'll think those plans were sent to the Boncom on January 5th. February 14th, request for continuation to April 21st meeting. Cannot address concerns about site distances because measurements cannot be made due to severe weather, winter weather. February 17th, 2011, continued public hearing. No revised plans have been submitted yet. ZBA asked for waiver list to include why applicant feels it is un-economical. Continued to April 22nd. March 21st, 2011, no, no request for continuance. Email sent to DeCoulas informing him there will be no April meeting. We never received a formal request for continuance to May from him. However, he did request continuance to June as a May meeting. April 2011 marks one-year point since application, no progress. Applicant provides updated waiver list. Camet provides preliminary review of application and request of board, noting preliminary deficiencies that must be corrected before any reading. Noting preliminary deficiencies that must be corrected before any review begins. April 22nd, 2011, meeting canceled due to lack of available quorum. Public hearing continued to May 19th. May 10th, 2011, request for continuation to June 16th meeting. DeCulless asked for continuation due to a personal health problem. May 19th, 2011, continued public hearing. Camet has submitted list of application inefficiencies, which has been sent to the applicant along with a deadline in June 16th for submission of the missing information so that the consultant can begin their review. Applicant is not present, has sent request for continuance. Continued to June 16th, 2011. And then in May, Camet and the ZBA application to efficiencies. And they were sent to DeCulless and DeCulless submits $5,000 for the reserve fund. June 13th, 2011, request for continuation to July 21st. No reason given. Chairman asked DeCulless to attend June 16th meeting regardless. June 16th, public hearing. Applicant explains that the drainage calculation is very complex, which is the reason why it is taking so long to submit revised plans. Applicant submits revised waiver list which includes reasons for waivers. ZBA discussed giving more time to applicant to submit missing information before the consultant begins their review. Applicant does not want to raise consultant's funds in review of possible plans, asks for more time. Members grant an extension of time for missing material to June 30th, 2011. Continued to September 15th, 2011. June 29th, request for extension of the ZBA deadline set for revised materials. Applicant asked to extend deadline to July 31st, 2011. Need more time to finish plans due to corrupt CAD file. July 7th, 2011, ZBA holds special meeting to accept applicant's written request for more time to submit information. ZBA sets new deadline to July 31st, 2011. DeCulless sent email stating unable to attend. August 1st, 2011, the revised plans and applications submitted to ZBA. September 15th, 2011, request for continuation to October 21st. Need time to form a response to town comments. September 15th, continued public hearing. ZBA resumes new town comments revised plan. DeCulless will have response to town comments at the October meeting. Continued to October 20th. October 18th, request for continuation to November 17th meeting. Time needed to respond to tech review agents' report. DeCulless is not attending October public hearing to listen to Camet's presentation. October 20th, continued public hearing. ZBA consultant engineer, Camet Engineering presents their review of the narrowing rate application. Applicant is not present and has sent a request for continuance to November 17th. November 14th, request for continuation to December 15th, 2011 meeting. Time needed to take measurements for site distance, this is response to Camet comments. November 17th, 2011, continued December 7th, December 15th, 2011. Applicant sent a request for continuance. December 13th, 2011, request for continuation to January 19th, 2012. A A S H T O recently revised their regulations concerning site and stopping distances and will have to revise figures. December 15th, 18 month point since application refers complete plan review. December 15th, public hearing continued. Applicant had asked for continuance but was asked by the chairman to attend this meeting and update the board on why he does not yet have the information for the board. Applicant presents the information he does have for the board and explains about ASHTO's new regulations in traffic. Guided traffic. Applicant will have new revised plans. Advocate will have new revised plans in response to ZBA consultant review by early January. Continued to January 19th, 2012. And on and on we go. December 19th, 2011, applicant, applicant submits response to Camet's review along with revised plans, plans in text. 122711 memo to ZBA to all departments revised plans in response to Camet. January 19th, request for continuation to March 15th meeting. Time needed for Camet to respond to DeCulless's response. January 19th, 2012, continued public hearing. Applicant's engineer presents response to Camet's review. DeCulless asked that Camet respond to his response. Board continues public hearing to their March meeting and send invitation to Camet to attend the March meeting. March 15th, 2012, continued public hearing. ZBA voted to require that the applicant perform a traffic study. ZBA votes to instruct Camet to begin a second review of the application revisions. DeCulless is instructed to submit any changes since 2000, since 12, 2011 to the board and Camet with all changes highlighted. ZBA asked for the developer, Tom Franco's, be present at their next public hearing with samples of other projects. Applicant is directed to explain extent of waiver requests. On March 15th, request for continuation to May 17th meeting. Time needed for Camet's response about applicant's traffic study. May 8th, DeCulless dropped off his revisions to Camet. May 9th, DeCulless stopped in at ZBA office. And now here is, DeCulless brought ZBA the revisions which included an updated revision to his responses to Camet's review. The first of which he submitted in December 2011. He was asked if he had highlighted all the changes he made. He proceeded to highlight all the changes he thought he had made to the document. He was also asked if he intended to submit at least eight copies for board members. He was asked if he had revised the description of the waiver request of the board had asked us to do it. Meaning March, he replied he didn't really understand the request. He has still not heard back from one traffic consultant he requested a full prompt. Said Tom Franco's applicant will bring copies of purchase and sale agreement to next week's meeting and he would have a plan, show a call me when land owned by the senior board of the board requested. May 17th, continued public hearing. Applicant Tom Franco's is present at meeting with pictures and projects he has worked on. DeCulless tells the ZBA he will mail copies of pictures to Ed. Concom is not yet receiving a filing from the applicant and wanted the ZBA to know there may be issues with currently proposed design. Board says map of all land of Tompkins, Miss Jardine Trust submitted is not acceptable and directs DeCulless to submit one with more detail surrounding the waters with larger scale. ZBA tells DeCulless they do not want Camet to review the submitted revised changes until the traffic, till the traffic study. PNS and surrounding land plan has submitted to the ZBA. DeCulless submits request for continuation to July 19th, 2012. July 19th, request for continuation to September 20th meeting. No reason given. July 19th, public hearing. And I guess we received revised plans and a traffic study. September 9th, 18th, 2012, request for continuation to October meeting. Redesigning stormwater system and will submit the design to RCC. October 16th, request for continuation November 15th. Still redesigning stormwater system and will submit the design to RCC. November 14th, request for continuation to December 20th meeting. No December meeting. December 7th, request for continuation to January 17th meeting. Found large amount of stone required in the design of the system uneconomical so that we reverted to an open detention pond system which will be completed in the next few weeks. January 15th, 2013, request for continuation to February 21st meeting. Mr. DeCulless has been ill. Plans to send stormwater design plan to RCC this week for technical review. February 19th, 2013, request for continuation to March 21st meeting. Plans to submit a notice of intent to the RRC this week which will then require a technical review report. February 20th, 2013, Mr. DeCulless requested a copy from the ZBA of a Camet engineering proposal for conducting a review, a flood study. After review with KO, sent Mr. DeCulless a copy of the Camet engineering estimate dated April 27th, 2011 for doing a review of the flood claim during annihilation. March 20th, 2013, request for continuation of April 18th meeting. Have finished the stormwater computations for the project and plans to submit a notice of intent to RRC next week. They will then request a technical review report upon receipt of the report. Will send ZBA copies.
Can I interject here?
Yeah.
You just read April 13th, 2013?
Yeah.
Okay. Take a breath. And let me, let me read because at this juncture in time.
If you will excuse me, I'm going to stand up because I have to. I'm not supposed to sit for 45 minutes. And it's just about 45 minutes in my sitting.
I'm just going to continue. At this point in time, relevant to the course of events that's occurred, the board was, um, desired to express its feelings about the status of the application to this point, which was almost three years old at that point in time. And we drafted and, and sent to Mr. DeCulless the following letter. The zoning board of appeals would like to express the following concerns and identify the remaining process for this hearing. Mr. DeCulless, we have received yet another one of your requests for a continuance. In the last 12 months, we have granted nine continuances on this case, which is to say 75% of the time the board did nothing except pass the data forward. Each one due to a need by you to complete progress on reports or information previously requested by the board or to prepare and provide information to other town boards or commissions pertaining to your application. As of this hearing, however, we are in fact at the three-year anniversary of your application and feel we are no further along than when we first learned of and viewed your plans. Despite the generally cautious view of 4B developments held by the public, the board welcomed your application and has attempted to work with you in a constructive manner in an effort to come to some mutually agreed upon project format so that a development could occur. The board has continually tried to be sure you provide us with substantive material that would enable us to assist you in your efforts to complete this project. But as is evidenced by not only the last year in which there were nine continuances granted, the prior two years of this case had, has only generated enormous start and stop timetables and has essentially moved the project nowhere. The board has previously expressed our frustration with this process and has encouraged you to comply with our requests so that we could proceed with the normal process of vetting this application. Regrettably, this has not occurred and considerable board time has been expended trying to move the case forward. As part of this total process, the board has been in regular contact with town council and her Massachusetts housing provided consultant in an effort to find ways to resolve the process to both of our benefit. As a result of recent conversations and meetings with town council and upon the advice of our consultant, the board wants you to know the process we are now initiating as of this meeting. A, the board will produce a final list of requests for information, reports, or other related material the board deems necessary to complete the review of your application and will present this list in writing to you at the next continued hearing on Thursday, May 16th to 13th. The list will stipulate in precise form and content of the material the board has previously requested is necessary to process your application as well as details necessary for you to comply with such requests along with outline projected timelines going forward. Lastly, the board will provide you with a time period of 60 days to produce and furnish the requested information as a whole due at our July 18th, 2013 meeting. Upon receipt of said information, the board will commence a review of all that is submitted and work to render a decision based on the entirety of what has been provided. Our intent will be to bring this process to a conclusion in an expeditious manner with the keystone being finality of the case. With this in mind, the board will accept your current request for continuance and I will be sending you a written statement of this, a written copy of this statement. Sincerely, Donald W. Thurston, Chairman. So at that point, the board was expressing clearly its desire to move forward on the, in a material way, on the case. As a footnote, it is almost two years later and we are here today. We understand this frustration on your part. For the record, it's important that everyone understands that the board was frustrated two years ago. In May, there were a number of additional items that, that occurred in addition to which was the, the letter also produced that we indicated we would do so. I will read that letter now. Dear Mr. DeCulless, May 16th, 2013. In an effort to complete the assembly of relevant documents necessary for the board to complete its review of your application, we are writing to you on this date to indicate that the following items are either out of date, missing, or otherwise unclear and the board requests that you submit or resubmit, as the case may be by your records, a final and complete copy of said documents so that we can attempt to present you with a final disposition on your application. Therefore, please provide to the board the following information for inclusion in our review. One, a purchase and sales agreement between owner of land, Tompkins, Dave Jarden Trust and American Building and Revolving Corporation of America, Tom Franco's. Again, as a footnote, we did not receive a, a actual document to that effect till sometime in 2014 and we are now just getting an updated one for 2015. Two, submit any plans, text revisions to the ZBA and also to Camet Engineering, the original engineering firm hired by the ZBA to review the original plan. Highlight any changes made. The last complete submittal was 5812 and we understand there may be changes to those, there were, that make the current version different. Three, submit a plan that shows all neighboring land owned by the same owner and all points of public access to the property. Four, perform a traffic study on the design implications of the proposed project on the surrounding traffic patterns and submit to the board for review. Five, revise the descriptions in the waiver requests. Five, revise the descriptions in the waiver request to specifically explain the quote "anticipated outcome" unquote of granting the waiver. Instead of asking for a waiver from the Planning Board Rules and Regulations for Side Yard Setbacks, ask that the side yard setback requirement be reduced from 15 feet to 5 feet, as, as an example. Page two. Six, while floodplain issues delineated by the Rowley Conservation Commission in its letter of 5/12/2012 are not directly tied to the 40B application review process, the board upon advice of town council suggests applicant that it complete its efforts to respond to the CONCON with regard to stormwater management issues since it is conceivable that impacts caused by meeting stormwater regulations could force the applicant to again revise his plans and hence require further review by the board. As a footnote, this was a recurrent subject in front of the board. The board had difficulty understanding how the extensive issues surrounding stormwater management would not have been more effectively handled at the front end of the application rather than at this point in the application, nearly three years into it. It, it seemed to make sense to the board that this would have been an issue that would have been resolved at the front end so that the applicant could be aware of constraints that they may face, given their plan, and that, again, while it's not a direct relationship to the zoning fact, it could have and, and ultimately had some impact on the actual layout of the, of the project as it was finally submitted. This is just in, in my personal opinion, further evidence of, of the applicant's wavering from any sense of urgency in the project. Lastly, we said a complete line item response to each section excluding site description in the attached letter reviewed by Graham Associates provided by the Rowley Planning Board and the Zoning Board on November 22, 2011 with specific regard to any recommended changes therein which have since been incorporated into your current set of plans, either provided in May of 2012 or as part of the new submission response to this current request. Again, as a point of information, the planning board, in response to our information submitted to it regarding the application, decided on its own accord within full rights to use their own resources to employ Graham Associates to review the project, and they submitted those, that review to us for further review. And again, this is now, that was even, we're writing about something that happened here earlier. The board went on to say, "The board understands that the material noted above may have been previously submitted in some form, but due to the extended timeframe in which we have operated over a period of three years from the original submission date of the application, we believe it is appropriate to have the most current information concerning your proposed project available. In our ongoing effort to work in good faith with your desire to build this project, but also feeling like the process has exceeded a timeframe which even reasonable parties to such a process would consider as practical, we will allow you 60 days to assemble this information, effectively continuing the hearing until July 18, 2013. Upon receipt of said materials in whatever condition they are provided, the board expects to begin deliberation of the application in its entirety with the intent to rendering a decision at its earliest possible convenience. Sincerely, Donald W. Thurston." Copies to the applicant, Thomas Franco's, and Tompkins State Jardine's Trust. So, so we have, what we have here really is a demarcation point, three years into an application where the board made an effort to finally try to create some order to all of the voluminous data which was submitted by the applicant in an effort to inform the board, but, but came in, in such a happenstance method over sometimes a period of a year that even then we ran into issues. And I think, as Don mentioned earlier, while there are some things that the board likes about the project, there are things about the project that, that in terms of bringing new housing to the town are positive, there are things about the project that contribute to the overall viability of the town going forward. There is still some real questioning about the seriousness of the applicant in terms of their desire to actually get this done because even at this point, two years later, we're, we're only now at a point where we're, we're able to hopefully get forward. So these occurred at that point, Don, if you want to jump back with the rest of the timeline.
Okay, so that was...
May.
That was in...
May 213.
Okay, and I had, I had here April 20th, last... Okay, that went, your letter went through to May.
Right.
But timeline here is, "February 20, De Cullis requests a copy of ZBA Camet Engineering proposal for..." Okay, I already read that. "March 20, request for continuation, April 18 meeting. April 12, Chairman Thurston and Clerk Hyger met with Edith Neder and Judith Pickett at the ZBA office. As a result of the meeting, Judith and Edith requested documents associated with Marion Way project for review. April 16, 2013, request for continuation to May 16 meeting. Lodge plotter has broken down." That's the reason for the continuance. "April 18, 2013, continued public hearing. Chairman's comments, letter to Mr. De Cullis informing him of the time limit letter coming at the May meeting," of which you just read tonight. Okay. "April 30, 2013, mailed requested documents to Judith Pickett and Edith Neder. Nailed Chairman's comments, letter to De Cullis." "May 16, continued public hearing. Mr. De Cullis was given a letter from the chairman which was read, for the record, listing documents requested with a due date of July 18, 2013, 60 days. May 21, 2013, mailed Chairman's list letter to Graham and Graham's review report to Mr. Franco's. Mr. Bruce Tompkins, Mr. De Cullis, letter only, all by certified postage. Email from RCC, Mr. De Cullis from the RCC requesting assistance in obtaining the DEP stormwater report because he couldn't locate it on the DEP website. June 3, 2013, email from town council that property is still possessed with Marion B. Tompkins who died 4/12/11, whose state is not yet through code A. June 18, 2013, received copy of letter from Mr. De Cullis addressed to Mr. Fred Ford and Engineering, asking Camet to review the enclosed stormwater report planned at Marion Way to topographical plan and a check for $3,427. July 2, 2013, received copy of letter from Camet Engineering addressed to Mr. De Cullis. Camet requested a full set of the notice of intent application with supporting plans and calculations, and then they will then provide Conservation Commission with an estimate for a peer, peer review. July 3, 2013, Mr. De Cullis called the ZBA office requesting documents addressed to him and the Tompkins Trust from April 13 to 7, 2013. July 8, 2013, ZBA office emailed two documents as requested, a letter with Chairman's comments of 4/18 and a letter of docs listed on 5/16, 13. July 15, 2013, received email from Mr. De Cullis. Camet returned Mr. De Cullis a note because the report did not include a notice of intent. July 16, 2013, Mr. De Cullis called his ZBA office to say he was coming by to drop off copies and plans. After discussion with Chairman Thurston, called Mr. De Cullis and told him to bring his plans along with everything else requested to the meeting on Thursday, July 18, 2013. July 18, continued public hearing. Date requested documents are due. Mr. De Cullis didn't bring the requested PNS. Traffic assessment memo on 7/15, 2012. Responses to the Graham 11/22/11 report. Zoning setback report on 7/15/13. Plan of land 5/22. Topographical plan of 6/3/13. July 23, 2013, Mr. De Cullis emailed an agreement to the ZBA office. Mr. De Cullis stated that the email agreement was the purchase and sale agreement requested July 30, 2013, conference call with Edith Neder, Chairman Thurston, Clerk Hyger, and Administrative Assistant Rosie. ZBA consultant letter, Neder, has requested ZBA send her copies of all documents De Cullis gave at the 7/18 meeting. Copy of agreement in the highlight areas in question of the agreement along with a color letter and email from Judy. All sent from August 8/9, 2013. September 16, 2013, conference call with Edith Neder, Chairman Thurston, Clerk Hyger, and Administrative Rosie. Advised the ZBA to do the following at next meeting. Inform Mr. De Cullis that the ZBA intends to send the plans for their final comments to the town departments. Ask Mr. De Cullis for his approval to have Graham conduct a traffic study review and a final review. Ask Mr. De Cullis for architectural plans, floor plans, landscape plans, pro forma review. Ask Mr. De Cullis about a P E stamp on plans. September 19, 2013, continued public hearing. Mr. De Cullis is asked for approval to conduct a final review and a traffic study review. Doesn't agree to have Graham, wants Horstley Witten, wants to go out to get. Mr. De Cullis is asked for the deed to show ownership. Pro forma color letter with the construction budget report dated 9/18/13. September 24, 2013, received email from Mr. De Cullis saying he and Bruce Tompkins had a discussion, decided not to accept the board's request to have a traffic study review. Email of 9/22, ZBA contacted Mr. De Cullis and requested the email as a formal letter with letterhead, I suppose, to see. September 30, received requested letter, letterhead, letter 9/24/13. October 17, received email from AM from Mr. De Cullis. Letter of 10/17, De Cullis to ZBA. Letter of 6/22, De Cullis to ZBA. Declaration of trust, Tompkins, as justice. October 17, 2013, continued public hearing. Review email correspondents. ZBA closes the hearing. October 2nd, 2013. Received email from Mr. De Cullis requesting his email to email him the letter of 10/15 from Judy Pickett which was discussed at the meeting. October 22, 2013, special meeting with Edith Neder, Chairman Thurston, Clerk Hyger, Member Dunne, and the Leveque Administrative Rosie. Discuss the need to reopen the case with consideration of new documentation forthcoming from Mr. De Cullis as he stated in the meeting of 10/17. Revote was taken and the case will be reopened at the next meeting in November 2013. Board members decide to, after all reviews and consultants' boards and engineers received, they will review all documentation and construct a decision. October 23, 2013, received email from Mr. De Cullis. Agrees to reopen the case, A/10/06. October 25, received email from Mr. De Cullis. Attached copies of deeds the ZBA, the ZBA requested of 10/17 meeting. October 28, 2013, received a copy of the letter of 10/23. Letter stating copies of plans and a check to Horstley and Witten for technical review. November 4, 2013, ZBA letter, current plans and traffic study to town departments. Planning Board, CONCON, Fire Department, Police Department, and Water Department requesting final comments on the case. November 12, 2013, received email from De Cullis. States to reopen public hearing on Marion Way to... States to reopen the public hearing on Marion Way to March 4, 2014. November 5, 7, November 19, 2013, received email from Mr. De Cullis. Attached Horstley Witten report and will send his responsive comments and parting three weeks. Also unable to attend a November 21 meeting. November 21, reopening public hearing, case reopening, Mr. De Cullis is not present. November 27, 2013, request of continuation to December 19 due to a conflict. December 19, request of continuation to January 16, 2013, due to a conflict. January 14, request of continuation, February 20, 2014, meeting, due to a conflict. February 5, 2014, request continuation, March 20, due to a conflict. February 26, conference call with Don, Tom, and Eady. Request for information in case status, instructed to compose a letter. February 28, 2014, requested information sent to Eady. Copy of last May's letter with listed items and copy original Graham review. March 12, 2014, received email from CONCON regarding Mr. De Cullis granting the CONCON request for continuance to the April 15 CONCON meeting. March 17, 2014, request the copies of letters of Fire Department and Graham Associates. Mr. De Cullis asked for copies of the first January 11, 12 letter from the Fire Department and the 11/22/11 letter from Graham Associates from the ZBA office. March 20, 2014, continued public hearing. Mr. De Cullis handed to each board member a copy of proposed conditions, responses to Fire Department comments, branch turnaround comparison plan, and figure 12-2 for Mass Highway. It is stated that at the next meeting, a list of items requested by board members can be given to Mr. De Cullis. April 3, 2014, conference call with Don, Tom, and Eady. Eady questions the 40B eligibility of either applicant or not. Says she will make contact with Mass Housing for clarification. May 13, 2014, plans, PNS delivered to ZBA office. Current PNS, deeds, and site plans delivered to ZBA office. May 15, 2014, continued public hearing. Mr. De Cullis states he received report from Horstley Witten agreeing with his changes to the infiltration systems. He still needs to address CONCON COVID issue. No PNS and deed warrants a continued hearing. They want a continued hearing. Right to first refusal, Chapter 61, is discussed and De Cullis needs to contact. The Board of Selectmen obtained a formal position of statement received of their right of refusal. Current PNS is good for one year, ending in 2014. May 27, 2014, email to Eady. May 27th, 2014, email to Edie Nett. Tom's email of quick points and three questions. May 28th, 2014, response to Rosie's email of 5/27, requesting grant funds. Laura Schufelt of MHA responds, no new money available. Then, June 11th, 2014, Edie requests email, email of 5/27/14 to Edie is sent at her June 18th, 2014, conference call with Consultant E. Nett. Conservation centered mostly on denial. Close the hearing possibly in August. Nett will check on eligibility, contract, and name on it. Survey of lot. Judy reached for thoughts on 61A issue. June 19th, 2014, continued public hearing. Result of conference call with Edie, Horstley-Witten issue is no concern from ZBA. Feedback from departments is useful, but not critical. No need for reviews. Title search is not ZBA problem. Right of refusal shouldn't have been cleared, should have been, should have been cleared long time ago. She will contact Mass Housing for clarification. Eligibility. Wants to wrap up process and put decision in place. Board should wait for info from her. Recommended Board draft a letter for, fulfill remaining items, giving a 30, 60-day period. Supply Deculus with draft the missing items. After August, the Board will take action regardless of POS action. Deculus says he will take care of getting a recent survey of actual entire lot. June 24th, 2014, response email from Edie Nett on Hygood's email of 6/19/14. She met with Greg Watson, Mass Housing manager of 40B programs and eligibility issue. He suggests sending in the info, but Edie thinks just to make this ground for denial. June 17th, 2014, continued public hearing. Deculus waiting for his attorney to submit paperwork to the Board of Selectmen requesting withdrawal from Chapter 41, 61A. August 21st, 14, email, S and H P. MHP extending Eddie Nett's contract until December 1st, 2014. August 21st, 2014, continued public hearing. Horstley and Witten reviewed within 10 days. Deculus contacted Michael Hurley at Mass Housing and is looking into the eligibility issue. September 18th, 2014, Mass Housing letter received by USPS. Mass Housing letter from Greg Watson addressed to Mr. Deculus regarding applicant eligibility letter issue. Proposed its financial responsibility and meets the eligibility standing of housing program. September 18th, continued public hearing. Waiting on the order of conditions from ConCon. September 22nd, email received from ConCon. The Conservation Commission does not recommend a requesting a small acquisition for the purpose of open space. Right of first refusal, Board of Selectmen are issued. September 30th, 2014, Board of Selectmen waiver received. Board of Selectmen waiver elects not to exercise any and all first refusal options to purchase. October 2nd, 2014, email received from Edie Nett. Response to request for fee schedule, $2,000 an hour, and she intends to retire on the April 1st, 2015. October 16th, 2014, continued public hearing. Board didn't have a call, the co-assistants and attendants give the letter of continuance to Board through November 20th, 2014. December 20th, 2014, continued public hearing. Board accepts Deculus' letter of continuance through December 7th. 8th, Deculus is in attendance. Board waiting for response from Consultant. December 16th, email received from Deculus, requesting continuance through January 15th December 18th, email from Deculus. December 18th, 2014, continued public hearing. Board accepts Deculus' letter of continuance through January 15th, 2014 meeting. Deculus is in attendance. December 18th, received email from Deculus asking to review status of account and return the unused funds. January 19th, 2015, received from Deculus requesting continuance to February 19th, 2015 meeting, and a letter requesting a new public hearing. January 15th, 2015, continued public hearing. Acton Chairman reads continuous letter from Mr. Deculus for the record. Mr. Deculus is in attendance. A letter requested from Mr. Deculus for a new public hearing is discussed and Mr. Deculus agrees to withdraw the letter request. January 29th, 29th, ZBA received letter from Deculus asking the ZBA to release the $5,000 balance in the account. February 2nd, 2015, Board members sent email to Consultant, updating the consultant. February 2nd, 2015, email received from Consultant. Consultant was doing on vacation, will be doing and will not be doing any legal work. They just contacted Town Council. February 10th, 2015, email received from Town Council, Stephen Fletcher, will meet with Ball at February 19th meeting. That's the timeframe.
Now I've lost my thought.
Could you repeat that?
I was going through there, there were things that popped in.
You missed something back there in 2007. Okay. I seem to write. There isn't a 2007.
While you're gathering your thoughts, could I ask a question? We've gone through this extensive timeline. It sounds like the plans have gone through some changes. Do we have an inventory of all the documents? Do you keep a running inventory of the documents that has been introduced, all the exhibits?
I have all the documents. I don't have inventory of all of them, but I have.
The reason I ask is, at some point, when we draft a decision, we would want to recite in the decision everything that's been submitted because that's what's the board, that is what the board is considering. And it sounds to me like there are a lot.
Yes.
Which leads to the next question.
File listing?
There's at least 10 manila files, and we'd have to keep them in a box.
Well, as John pointed out to us, and as the timeline addresses, there was an initial set of plans that were provided to the board, and then about a third of the way into the project or so, we reached a point where the modifications and changes to the plan that you were working on were significant enough to warrant you to say, timeout, really? I'm going to give you a whole new set of plans that's substantially different.
According to the timeline, it says new revised plans and applications submitted to ZBA on August 1st, 2011?
That sounds about right, yeah.
And that's the working plans that you're dealing with?
That's the working plan that we, that has gone through a few iterations from that point, but that's the working plan from then, not the first plan. So the inventory of evidence, as it were, would be from that date forward relevant to the plans that we're working on. Insofar as the layouts of the lots, the locations of the units on the house. Again, this is for 10 duplex units, so for 20 total units is what we've been considering. There've been some recent, last 12 months, changes to driveways on a couple of them. Is that when that occurred?
Yes, yep.
We did, there were a couple driveways changed.
For drainage purposes.
Right, for drainage issues. So those, those change material of some of the plans. But those would be the relevant from 11 to now.
Well, is it your understanding, Mr. Deculus, that anything that other than the original application that came in, I guess, anything before these revised plans wouldn't be considered by the board, or they've all been superseded, or should the board be looking at everything from, from day one? The board will look at everything. Keep life simple here. I was trying to make it simpler, but...
No, because the original plans, the road, the road has been redesigned at the intersection many, well, three or four times, unfortunately.
I guess what I was trying to get at is, is there some way of simplifying the record here for the board here, so that they're not like looking at stuff or considering stuff that no longer is, is under consideration, or should?
I just think if we look at the, you look at the latest set of plans, that'd be it. And I can supply those if, if you need them.
Those are, those are the August plans of 11, because I, or were there, do you recall? I don't recall right now. This is the dilemma with this, with the length of the case, is that there was a period where on a, like, as John says, on the subject of the entryway, there were a number of changes that, changes appeared to have relevance. And then John would go back to work and they would say, eh, you know, we can't have an island there. We thought an island would be a good idea. They presented us with the island, and then the next one we said, no, can't do that. So we redrafted that. And then there were site distance measurements that were changed. Board actually did a site visit and walked the site. So those were kinds of, of changes that occurred month by month, and they're...
I get the, well, yeah, August 1st is the current, 2011.
Yes.
Came out, the earlier one was March 31st, 2010.
Good, good for you, good, excellent, yeah. That's right. That's the most recent.
But I think there are later plans, aren't there?
Later than that one?
I think so.
Modifications to that.
This is dated August, oh, this is August, 2011. You've got, you've got a set of plans that...
Can I see those? Caution.
May 22nd? May 12th, 2014.
What is that for?
Can I take this off the heat? July 15th, 2015.
Those are, are those incremental adjustments? What are those adjustments?
Plan, land, project, plan, function.
What you got on there?
We'll get that off.
You got a 14?
This is like a review and traps.
You know, I'm seeing a use for Dragon software here to go through the files and more safety. You know what I'm talking about?
No. I get it, I think.
It's a, it's a voice. It's a, you can, you can read into it and it'll convert, land your voice into text.
You gotta revise April 25th, 2012. You gotta revise June 3rd, 2015. Okay, this is page two of nine. And this is dated...
That's May 12th, 2014. Yeah, the original.
The date of this is July 26th, 2011. 2011. So that's what I...
You have revision blocks on there, which...
I got revisions here for revised April 25th, 2012, and revised June 3rd, 2013. I'm going to suggest, John, that you give us a complete set of plans. Present ones, of, of present plans, and we'll go from there.
I think I've given them to you, but I'm, you know, it's been so...
The easiest thing in this business is making copies.
This plan here says, we received it on 12 May, 2014. Okay?
Okay, I'll take one.
All right? But the date of this plan is July 26th, 2011.
Okay.
Now, you have changed, you have changed a lot of this.
Right.
Since then.
That's right.
So this plan is obsolete.
Well, no, 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 wait a minute. This, this, this iteration of the original plan may be a fully corrected plan to this date. What I would like to do is, if this is the most recent date, which is now almost a year...
This is the date of this plan.
Yeah, I know, but, but we received this 214. It's conceivable that the piece of paper we have dated 2014 is different, in fact, from the original plan that was dated here, because John has made, made changes to the 11 plan that are reflected in this plan that he submitted on this date. What we don't know is, you know, where the changes were. What I would like to do is see if Lisa can produce an entire set of plans dated the 14, if that's the last set we have, give them to John and say, is this the complete set?
What we need is a set of plans that say, July 26th, 2011, revised August 31st, 2014.
Oh, that would be the right way.
That's what we need, that's what we need. As far as I'm concerned...
That stamp up there doesn't mean...
This means nothing. This particular plan, however, has never been changed from day one. It just so happens, because it's a perimeter plan. Okay. But that's, that's really the only plan that has not changed. Right, but we, you change the driveway and you change the entrance. I changed the roadway, but, but I never changed the right of way, Dave.
No, no, you're right.
The right of way is still, still remains the same.
Okay, well, we do have, our timeline says, this date, plans, May 13.
What's that dated, John?
What's that dated? May 12th, 2014.
Which, which was the, the stamp is, well, here or down?
Well, that's just our received.
The date of this plan was July 26th, but we received this, in this packet, in May, and received May 12th. See, that's our stamp. That's what we received.
Oh, okay.
That's what we received. Lisa, you'll have to be careful that...
All right, so now we're going to get a whole new set of plans, a whole, a fresh copy, I believe.
On the up-to-date ones.
No, I won't be here at the March meeting, so...
Yes, you will, because we're going to hold a meeting in March when you're, when you're around. I'm not going to tell you when. I leave the 18th, so.
What happened to our calendar? Did it die? Did it not go to the New Year? What's the not-go-to-15?
I don't know.
Evidently, somebody didn't like it.
Took Matt's.
Somebody didn't like the calendar.
Yeah.
So why couldn't we have the 12? So why couldn't we have the 12th?
What is the, what's the date supposed to be?
Five, 12.
March 12th. March 19th is the meeting. If you move it up a week, it'll be March 12th. All right?
If we move it back a week, it'll be when?
20, 20.
When will you...
I normally come back to April.
Yeah, so it has to be...
A week in April.
Oh, you're going for three weeks?
Yeah, I want something in April. That's wrong.
No snow.
If it is, it's not coming home.
You're not coming home.
Should be gone by then. Okay, so you're not going to be around in March at all?
The end of March, March 18th.
After the 18th, he's gone.
After the 18th, I'm gone.
So we can just move it up?
Okay. But you'll be back in April.
April, yeah.
For six.
All right.
We'll hold a meeting.
We can either do it on Thursday, the 12th...
Yeah, do it the second Thursday of the month instead of the third, if you want, in March.
Check the calendar out, if you've got this one.
Do we have any other cases yet? What's our other case?
Yeah, we have that one. May ask, Mr. Dukola. Any question you want. Mr. Dukola, do you keep a record of what you've submitted to the board?
Yes, yeah.
Can you help us out and send us a copy of what your records show that you've submitted to the board?
Absolutely, yeah.
So we don't miss anything here? Do you ordinarily, when you submit something, have a cover letter with it, or is it more informal?
Usually, right, right.
So that would make it easier.
Agricultural has a meeting.
Who?
Agricultural.
How many people in that room?
Agricultural?
Well, how about doing it the next day? What's the next available day? We just need an available day.
We can meet...
We used to go on the elderly before.
Yeah, we could.
Yeah, I mean, we met at C.
We used to meet in the COA office.
Let me go check it. I'll be right back.
Don't forget the plan for lounge. My recommendation, since you may ask, is, you know, it's up to the applicant to decide what they want to supply.
Oh, thank you.
And then when you're looking for closure here, just make sure that he's submitted everything he wants to submit.
Probably, yeah.
I admire the board for your patience and your diligence in giving him empty opportunities to provide stuff, but ultimately, it's up to him, you know, to present you with the evidence he wants you to make a decision on. So, and also, in line with, you know, coming up with the inventory of exhibits or whatever, I mean, I've gotten a message here that you've asked for a bunch of stuff, and you still believe you haven't gotten it, some of it anyway. It would be good to isolate what it is that you think that he still hasn't provided you, whether it's traffic information, or a response to comments, or whatever it is. And because if indeed he hasn't provided that, and you've given him that opportunity, and he knows that he's supposed to provide it, that would be part of the decision, whichever way you vote. But, you know, I would want, if I'm writing the decision to put in there, the board asked for this stuff, you know, itemize it, and it wasn't provided, and the board asked for it back in May of 2013, apparently, or whenever you did. But I would encourage the board, you know, to focus in on that part as well as, well, that's one part. What did he ask for, what didn't he provide? Now we go ahead, and we'll decide the case on what he's provided, you know, and whether that, you know, results in your decision to deny it, or prove it with conditions or whatever. But that would be real helpful, I think, both in your considerations, but also in writing the decision here. You know, we start off with what the evidence is, you know, it'll probably take as long as your recital tonight, if, I mean, with your going through all of the history here, and then you go on to, you know, this wasn't provided, and then you go on and decide yea or nay on what he has provided. But as I understand it, what you're in agreement is, is Mr. Dukola is going to provide you updated plans, and if there's anything else you want him to provide... Do we ever get the answer from CONCON? Aren't we working on something? CONCON? Aren't they supposed to come up with? Are they unhappy with something?
No, we got notified...
Did they?
That CONCON doesn't have any bearing on our decision.
No, no, no.
But there were...
If he has complied to the CONCON, and it shows on the plan, that's one thing. But I know in the last case that we had, we had an issue with CONCON, but they took care of it after the decision in May. You know, we said, we've got to clear with CONCON before we can do this.
You know, that's the same with border health, you've got, yeah, under zoning, you can do
this, but you've got to meet border health regulations, you know.
This tightens this thing up.
I sent a letter in on the 20th requesting the release of the balance of the funds in my account.
Yes, I know you have. And when we've made a decision, when we have made a decision, pro or con, you'll get the balance. Not before.
Why not?
Because we're not done. Because we're not done.
Yeah, but there'll be no more technical reviews.
Maybe not.
Maybe not.
Maybe there will be.
Well...
Maybe we...
No, I know, the other boards, the other boards act in a manner that, if you need a technical review, you send it out for a bid, the bids come back, and whatever the amount is, the applicant submits the amount at that time, not before.
Well, that's another board, this is a zoning board.
I know.
And it's different.
I know it's different, and I'm just...
Hoping.
Hoping that they'd release it. Like the late Senator Dirksen said, pretty soon we're talking some serious money.
I mean, it's...
You're waiting for your paycheck.
I mean, that's an issue that you brought us on. You know, you didn't want us to spend it. And so, we really haven't had a final review of your plan, because we haven't received your final plan. You're going to bring that at the next meeting.
Right, I see, okay, all right. Just thought I'd ask.
Okay. And hopefully, I won't have to do that.
You know, your own regulations talk about, if I'm looking at the same funds here, these are the funds deposited in the account for consultant. It says, within thirty days of the completion of the project, of such times the applicant formally withdraws a proposal, the applicant shall receive a final reported funds, and the special accountant shall be paid any unspent excess in the account, including accrued interest. Completion of the project.
That's not completion of the application.
He draws up money.
You can't have it.
Now, the state regulations may provide for something different, I don't know, but I'm just reading the town regulation, your own regulations, right? But you promulgated in my absence.
Which what?
But you put into effect while I was gone.
Well, I'll tell you, before he goes off the board, we've got another blue set that's going to be crossing your table.
Oh, really?
Yes.
She says the 16th is open. Of March, it's a Monday.
And you will still be here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do it. I can do it Monday.
Can you go down?
16th.
16th.
March 16th?
John, did you get that?
March 16th, right. I have a letter requesting continuance to March 19th, but I'll change the date to the 16th.
There's no holiday or anything that day?
No, there's actually no holiday.
Saint Patrick's Day is the next day.
Actually, there's no holiday in March.
17 Saint Patrick's Day.
This is not the day. It's the day after the date.
Do we have anything else to discuss tonight?
Well, only to reiterate, Steve Fletcher's request, John, that you produce an inventory of documents, a line item, outline of documents, you can do that. I think that would be helpful, essentially, for him to see how close it comes to matching our timeline. I'd still like to, you know, Lisa, I'd still like to see you pull that last complete plan that we have, which is this May 14th plan, and I think if you share that with John, and John confirms that, yeah, I got nothing different than that, that's the plan, then there's no reason for him to go produce five more copies of the plan. What's the point, if we have it?
The only thing we have is what's attached to that. We don't have a full set.
We only got one page?
Right. He handed that to the board members the night of that meeting.
Oh, wait a minute. I thought the timeline said a full set of plans. Or a blank set. Let me see, let me read what this says.
Showing the board members...
The change.
The change.
He shows the change.
John's requested that we continue this to the 16th of March, at seven o'clock, then we'll meet in the council meeting.
No, we can meet here, this is open.
We can meet here?
Yes, this is open.
Okay, we can meet here.
I'll have the market.
So, her motion to, the letter states, kind of continuing publicity of the Marangue project during March 16th, 2015 meeting.
I don't know if we can accept that as a request.
We want you to accept this letter.
Uh, submised.
Second.
More favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We'll continue this.
I have one question, I think we need to ask, just for clarification. From an operating point of view, we've been able to work, to some degree, around an absence, and a projected absence, but none of us have control in the future. What happens if we fall outside the ability to have the four of us on this case by the time Nat retires? What happens to the case?
You got problems.
You got problems. What kind of problems?
What's it take for a vote? What's the required number?
It's a majority.
A majority?
It's a majority vote, so you could do it.
Down to three members, and you have it like it used to be.
Yeah, you really run into problems if you have certain members that have missed some of the meetings. But that can ordinarily be corrected by listening to a tape, if the tape has been made, you know, catching up, you know that. So, if you're asking if you don't complete it by the time...
Yeah, I watch it on...
Well, we'll lose him by default, but we would still have three working members.
It would take...
Two or three.
The one time I watch it out...
Oh, we'd have to do three, on three.
Well, I have to look into that. It gets tricky sometimes when you talk about a majority of the board versus a majority of a quorum.
Yeah.
So, but rather than giving you an answer off the top of my head, which is always dangerous...
Well, it's more dangerous, but here's a way to answer it. Did you know these meetings are on YouTube?
YouTube?
I didn't count that.
Yeah?
It's on the town thing. It is on the town website, but it's also, all the past meetings are on YouTube.
Why would they be there?
Is that, do you guys do it? How does it get there?
He's shaking his head.
He's shaking his head.
What's that, Palapta?
They're all on YouTube. You must be selling them.
Is that more entertaining than dancing cats?
I know, I bet.
Okay.
All right, so we're all set for the next one.
All set. Okay. Her motion to adjourn.
We adjourn the meeting this evening at 8:50.
One second.
More favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.